Anything or other? Other participants, maybe we can't see.
None on Zoom or in person.
Okay. All right. Well, someone joins later and has something to say, we can make space for them. Oh, here's Chapin.
You're here. You're in the right place at the right time.
Wow.
We'll get Chapin a second to get situated. Okay, so um, let's go ahead and well, let me just restate that we're open to public comment. Chapin, I don't know if you have anything to add?
No, I just want to say that the I do have a question. Is the select board picking things up again tonight? Yeah, so Chapin's questions about the form-based code, are they picking things up again tonight? And the answer is yes. They're continuing the conversation about their outstanding issues. I believe as reported in the Observer, the issues of where to adjust boundaries of the code area have been more or less decided. I think I think they'll confirm that direction to me later tonight. They wanted staff to do a little bit of work on building height. They were not interested in reducing the number of allowed stories, but wanted us to come back with some suggested absolute limits in feet for building height so that someone could do the maximum height in the pitched roof, but maybe not on the very biggest possible building, which is where you can get into the sort of theoretical hundred-plus-foot building heights. So if you if you want to look, or we can show it later in our conversation, the memo I wrote to the select board using a graphic prepared by Jeff Farrell, showing how you can you can achieve on a sort of normal reasonable depth building, you can achieve the maximum five stories plus one attic story with the middle pitch at a height of about eighty-eight feet. So just that's that's, I think, we'll be talking about this memo that Emily's showing right now tonight. Just basically probably having some kind of absolute limit in feet on height be part of the code, but intentionally a limit that would allow the maximum heights to still be achieved. In other words, don't don't cut the stories off at the knees, you know, or make them unachievable, but just something reasonable. So you couldn't put the very pointiest roof on top of the very biggest tallest building. And we can, we can talk about that some more when we when we come to it. So we have on the agenda later tonight to talk about this. I mean, I usually do public comment on the agenda, but since they're going to be discussing this, can I just say I thought they missed the boat on? When they looked at the SS Alliance Church property in Snyder's application, they're saying, oh, it's seventy-five percent vested, so it's only twenty-five percent. It's likely to be built. You know, I think Jeff said, I I realized if he had to come back, if he didn't build and it went back, it would be a different story, but it's probably going to be built. And it's seventy-five percent vested, so let's put it in the old zoning. I feel as though we thought, you know, if he has to constantly be looking at his rearview mirror, if he's going to revise anything, it's got to conform. And so he might be be sort of pushed towards conforming a little bit more, even even though he's vested. There was, I thought the vested seventy-five percent might be affected by the fact that he, if he wanted to revise it, it would have to be form-based code compliant. And so I think they didn't even think of that point. And I feel like really felt like they missed the boat on on the potential value of saying it's in the district, even though he's already seventy-five percent vested in in stuff under the old zoning. And and similarly, on the on the Jeff and Jeff property for path associates, tough, whatever it is. We are trying to make things less automobile-centric, and automobiles are never brought up except from the idea of advertising that you have parking by having it front. And do we want to continue and encourage people from New York State and Montreal and all of Vermont to drive all those miles to come to Williston to shop? And there was no consideration of that. It was like, well, if there's demand and there's market, we should probably let Jeff Davis do something about that. And so to me, it missed the whole role of becoming less automobile-centric in that discussion. And the other thing is probably not kosher, but if if there were a compromise being made in the future, let's say Jeff Davis came in and said, look, I got this particular customer that wants to build a one-story building in there, it would be a negotiating point if he would give a good price on some of the green space that we want to put into the thing. There was there's some leverage in having the the line put where we think it should be, that we still could wiggle around it if, but it becomes a point of of um bartering in a sense. And basically, all any leverage we have is taken away when those boundaries are changed as they were. So I just thought they totally missed the boat on those two. And I don't know what to do about that.
Matt, they are they're meeting tonight in a discussion, as you said, that that you've used some of these points again.
They talked about taking a more formal vote tonight because, you know, because one member wasn't there. So they were saying, you know, stop hold, looks like this is in, this is in. I don't think they've decided officially what they're going to convey to us. And so I didn't know if there's a way to have these points brought to their attention.
Well, I suppose we could send you over as a delegate. The I I have to say that it it did seem like when some or all of the planning commissioner, planning commission members were in the meetings, the discussion was maybe a little bit more favorable on the form-based code. This is just an impression, but it does make me wonder. Shayla, and then I actually would like to get back to our agenda because we did carve out time to talk about the form-based code. Go ahead, Shayla.
I I I don't, if people think it would be effective to have Chapin do that, I very much agree with you, Chapin, in terms of just feeling a little a little frustrated that at the level of consideration for the work that we did in considering those requests originally, and the work that we did listening to the community and that type of request and and feeling like they're just hearing the developer and and sort of capitulating to the status quo in terms of power dynamic, and that is frustrating. So I would support. I don't know if we think it would be helpful and and I would look to you, Megan, and and Matt and Emily, say, I think we should, I would support you going over there, Chapin, and encourage that.
Do we know what time? Do we know what time that's supposed to be?
Seven fifty-five, I believe. You have to go over at seven thirty.
I have to go over for something else at seven thirty, but I think it's about seven fifty-five. So I'll just say I'm not sure if the board is going to be taking comment from anybody tonight rather than sort of quizzing me on the building height issue. I do think that the likely result of tonight's meeting would be to direct us to warn a hearing with a revised draft of the code, including possibly these boundary changes. You know, I I can certainly speak for the planning commission to con base some of what I've heard about, you know, all of, you know, the the sort of standing up for the public process and feeling like the commission did good work, listening to the public and that setting those boundaries was intentional based on that. And and, you know, I think in a global sense, the idea that in particular, the regulating plan and official map are a a statement of policy as much as they are a development code. And that when when you reduce their geographic scope, you're changing what you're saying about policy because you're saying, you know, do this walkable pattern here, but over here, we're not going to impose that. And so the 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 point at which the negotiations begin goes from instead of the town adopted map, it goes to sort of a more sort of generalized town plan statement when you cross that boundary, which is kind of where we are today. So I do, I do think the select board is somewhat aware of that. I think they are trying to put forward and 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 work with a draft that you know, make some compromises, not just in the name of compromise, but in that they have folks who own a bunch of land in the code area resisting really having anything change at all. And they're changing a lot, but more formally, I'll just say that if if we do receive direction from the select board to go ahead and warn a hearing, there will be an opportunity for the planning commission on September twentieth at least to prepare a comment back to the select board about that hearing draft and about any of those changes. If if the draft keeps changing, the process keeps getting dragged out, and that's sort of the other side of this is that at some point, it may be worth it to the planning commission to have something in place that can be amended and can be built upon. I'm really biased toward completing this process because it's been, it's been a long one and and sort of the the most significant effort of my career as a planner. So I'm trying to take my bias out of that and and make sure that there's room for the planning commission to give voice to that. But I do also think there's there's a major step that still exists in this modified draft. And that's, you know, that's just sort of my my perspective right now. I'll be able to tell everybody tomorrow what I know about the select board because I think I'll have some relatively final instructions from them.
Okay, um, thank you for that insight, Matt. I think, given that they're not taking comments, it's probably best to to keep Chapin with us. And and, you know, trust the process also recognize that this would go to a hearing, that there's still negotiation, public input, and so forth. And that
I just want to say, I too want this thing to be in place as fast as possible. And so I don't see going back and forth with them. I feel like if they are going to come to us, the recommendation, we have to change the boundaries, the boundaries get changed. I'm just really sad about that. But that's why I'm wondering if there's a chance to have input to them before they make their their votes to whatever they're happening. I can certainly just give give voice to that tonight. That's what I'm hearing from from you folks. And the point to me is that I thought they were being very reasonable with what they were saying, but they were leaving out things, you know, it's not just seventy-five, twenty percent of a project, twenty-five percent of a project, there's more to it than that. And it's not just that there's a vendor that wants to have a one-story building with parking in front. There's a whole lot behind that.
Okay. The thing I would note too, that I think both the select board and Jeff and Jeff are forgetting is that this isn't a get out Jeffrey Carden entirely by moving the district boundary. They're still going to be subject to the mixed-use commercial zoning standards. And throughout this process, looking at several of their applications that have friction with the current bylaws, I can see them trying to propose something that's still going to have friction because the current bylaws still want, you know, what the uh shops that are smaller than twenty thousand, larger than twenty thousand square feet to have a wrap of shops, buildings pulled to the street. So there's still some hints of form-based code in the current bylaw that they're going to struggle with. They're trying to, you know, bring in a specific retailer.
Okay, great.
Just like, we're just trying to change the paradigm.
Okay, um, thank you, Matt, for representing our views on that. And thank you all for that productive conversation. And welcome, Kate. And let's go to minutes. The minutes of August second. I went in and made one change. Emily, I don't know if you can see it. There was a sentence that was not completed, and I kind of guessed on what it should say. That's probably the main thing. Other than that, I didn't. It was just little, you know, it was really nothing. Oh, that one that where I just added, do not support their plans because there was nothing there. And I don't know if I interpreted it correctly, but maybe you can check.
And I added the statement, and Keanu agreed with that clarification that there are buildings in the historic district that are would not be, yeah.
Okay, um, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
So moved.
Thank you, Chapin. Ellie can be the second. All in favor?
Hi.
Alex, I didn't.
All of you seen, I wasn't there.
Okay, right. Yeah, that's fine. Okay, so one, two, three, four, five, six in favor, one abstention. All right, notices from other jurisdictions. You want to talk us through that? Is that your review, Matt?
Yeah, so I don't know how much anybody was able to look at this. This is a proposed change to Shelburne's form-based code. If you've been following the news, there's been a fairly controversial project proposed under that code on Shelburne Road. It's across from Feldman's Bagels with the little houses that has a chiropractor in it, if you have any familiarity with Shelburne Road at all. And my read on the proposed change to the form-based code is that essentially the area in question would be taken out of the form-based code overlay district. And I want to highlight just a couple of things for the planning commission to think about. Number one, there's been a lot of conflict about this in Shelburne, and you're talking about multi-story apartment buildings being proposed sort of a stone's throw away from some from a, you know, sort of long, long existing single-family neighborhood that goes down to the lake off the side street. And and just, you know, a whole lot of sort of the typical conflict in development review. I don't, I don't want to be living near large buildings. I'm concerned about traffic, et cetera. And even some planning commission members in the process saying, well, I was here for that, and I didn't realize we were allowing such large buildings in this part of town. So a couple of things to highlight. Number one, what's happening in Shelburne is not an indictment of form-based code as a tool. It's it's a conflict over zoning that allows a significantly more intense form of development in really close proximity to a far less intense type of development. A lot of the conflict reads like the kind of conflict we would have over almost any new development in Williston. And I just, I just would want to sort of at least express my opinion in reading it that the conflict is not about the fact that there's a form-based code. The conflict is is about new development next to longstanding development. And further, if anybody was to say to you, you know, come up to you in the grocery store and say, hey, I can't believe Williston's thinking about a form-based code. Look what's happening in Shelburne. Recall that the Williston code very intentionally steps down the height and maximum allowed size of buildings as the code area approaches the existing residential side of Williston down near the Allenbrook and Talcott Road. So if if someone were to accost you in the grocery store and say, are you doing to us what what Shelburne's code did to that neighborhood off of Shelburne Road? You can say, well, no, you know, we have a whole section on on neighborhood relationships and how how new buildings relate to old. And you know, there was some intentionality about where the the less intense development was limited by the code in proximity to sort of existing development. So those two things said, the other thing I would really encourage you to just watch for fun sometime, if you can dig it up, and maybe I'll send a link around, is our consultant Jeffrey Farrell's former business partner, Mary Madden, who is very active in the Congress for New Urbanism, is very, you know, as as much a form-based code planner as Jeff is for sure, was actually brought to the Shelburne Planning Commission to talk through why are they having so many issues with their form-based code and to provide an outside critique by another professional. And the forty-five minutes of that planning commission meeting where she goes through their code and the ways in which it's either ambiguous or doesn't really lead to an intended outcome or doesn't give the the town of Shelburne a lot of certainty over what will be built under the code. And and the number of times she says, I just, I wouldn't write a code like this. I wouldn't write it this way. And with all of your familiarity with the with the draft Williston code, I think you would, you would hear a lot that resonated in that critique. So I may send that link around. So anyway, this is a, this is a, oh, shoot, put on the brakes. We have something that at least some folks in town feel is an unintended consequence of form-based code, and we're going to take this area out of the form-based code area. That's what's happening in Shelburne.
Thank you. That that helped a lot from reading it.
It's not easy to read because the biggest edit is there's a, there's a red line around an area on the map indicating that that area comes off the map. And that's really your only indicator of of what's what's happening because another difference, not to pick on Shelburne, but there's not really a boundary to their code area. There's a map with some character areas overlaid on it that you kind of have to understand as a boundary, but it it doesn't really show up like we're moving the boundary. It's like we're just, we're deleting this neighborhood from the code area. So that's, that's what's going on there.
Good. Thank you. Any questions for Matt or comments?
Just one question, Matt, what happens once they delete it? Like it reverts back to their old zoning, which I assume is very different than their form-based code zoning?
It does. And Alex, that reminds me of another interesting point about Shelburne's form-based code, which is it's optional. Shelburne's form-based code was not applied along with a repeal of the underlying zoning or any changes to the underlying zoning. The applicant gets to pick which one they want to be subject to. Which also, you know, over time may result in, for example, a form-based code building in one place on Route seven and a VIP auto somewhere else right next to each other. VIP auto works great under the existing zoning, and then an apartment building with two or three stories right up on Shelburne Road works great under form-based code. I think that was politically as far as they could get in Shelburne when their code was adopted. There was some nervousness over wholesale replacing the underlying zoning. But I think what you're seeing happen over time is you're getting a mix of the two.
Yeah. Interesting. Okay, thank you. Thanks for the question, Alex. So I think we're just about on time to move on to the village bylaw update. And I'm going to guess this is Emily's review.
Yep, see you later, Matt. So my last meeting, August second, we had a work session on some of the amendments to make to the village bylaw update. Our upcoming meeting, September twentieth, will be a community meeting to discuss these changes with the public and also an opportunity in my mind to query both the planning commission and the public on materials and where folks fall on some of the material discussion. We didn't talk about that on the August second work session. And I think materials is probably one of the more challenging topic areas. It sounds like the planning commission is interested in moving into a direction of more flexibility. So I'm still crafting how this meeting is going to work and hopeful we can use Mentimeter, make it more fun and engaging, both for planning commission members and the public to give feedback, talk about the changes that we're working on, talk about materials, and then, you know, hear more generally from people. Since that August second meeting, I've met with a couple village residents that really have, you know, mixed feelings. They're both in support of some changes, and they have concerns about other parts, I think, like any reasonable person would. So hopefully, they'll attend the meeting. But so far, it's been, you know, really good discussion where I've been able to learn from people and you know, take their perspective and think about how how the chapter can become the best iteration for the village. So that meeting will be on September twentieth. And it sounds like with stuff that's going to happen around form-based code, the community meeting wouldn't take up the whole agenda, but it probably would be the first item and item from probably seven to to eight.
All right, so what is our, what is our task tonight with the village bylaw update?
Um, just that the September twentieth meeting will include a community meeting agenda item. There won't be a revised draft in the format Michael has been working on because I'm trying to amass all the edits to give him, you know, one document to run with. And I think having this community meeting with the public will be a good opportunity to kind of like a pre-hearing on it and hear from the hear from the residents, work together on some of the material topic areas and get some further direction on it.
Okay, um, that sounds great. I I guess I'm a little confused because we have an hour and twenty minutes devoted to this item on the agenda.
Oh, um, I think there was, yeah, when when Chapin emailed about the time thing here, let me share this brief. I think there was an issue on the agenda because I think it was probably copy paste because most of the agenda tonight is the work plan survey and discussion. So we have more time to talk through form-based code.
I see. Okay, I haven't, I must have the old version here in front of me.
Yeah, sorry, I just made that change this morning.
Oh, okay, yeah. Okay, then. Moving on to form-based code. We kind of already started this conversation, but I I don't know. Do do people feel like we want to continue to discuss it? Or is there? Are we kind of at a point where we need to just kind of wait and hear what happens tonight? What is the sentiment? Kind of, we kind of did things out of order, so I'm hoping to.
Megan, I'd be curious, just from like an institutional memory piece, if there's precedent for this kind of I don't know, experience where the planning commission will spend time on something, and then the select board makes some pretty serious changes that doesn't disregard what we what we did. But you know, as Chapin and and other folks have mentioned, it does change especially that one-story thing with parking lots. I mean, that's a really big difference to what we were trying to build. And I'm just curious if there's, for folks who have been on this planning commission longer, if there is, you know, precedent for that, or if that's like just par for the course and something that you know, it's good to establish this now because like Chapin said, if we have it on record, we can start moving forward and making edits and that sort of thing. I get that. But I'm just curious from like that standpoint.
Yeah, I mean, it, you know, and well, I guess I should say, from my experience, like, we've never put anything this gigantic in front of the flatboard. Maybe something along the lines of some of the, you know, like the revised updates to town plan would be, you know, very detailed, very long, complicated, and so forth. But, you know, but so that that said, I I don't really recall you know, the details of of some of those things. Sometimes we have been, you know, plant well, I should say, sometimes the planning commission is not, you know, we'll put something forward to the select board, but we're not of one mind, you know, and we have, we have diverse thoughts and opinions on whatever the topic is. I remember the marijuana dispensary conversation like a long time ago, when it was still the medical marijuana piece. That was quite divided among PC members. So yeah, so I I would say, you know, your results may vary. But but I, it's a good question.
It's like past experiences for me with other committees, something that was so, the duration of it being two years over the duration of it being two years over time with so much information, my experience has been almost like they defer to that process because it was so involved. And because there were so many stakeholders and because there was so much effort, not not sort of like an effort to you know, kind of shake things out. In 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 again, that same way that we've seen time and time again, where it seems to just be going to what is easiest and fastest and most efficient for developing, which is not what the community is looking for.
Right, yeah, um.
The only change I can think of, and this was before my time, so I've only heard it through the lore told by Matt. But when Gateway Zoning District West was created, you know, Williston Road and South Brownell Road intersection, that area originally the use table allowed more variety of uses, particularly, I think, some types of retail. And the select board decided to take retail out of the Gateway West District for reasons that, you know, tough corners is where we want mostly retail to be created. The specifics of what those use codes were in terms of what kind of retail, I can't say offhand. But that, I think, was a pretty significant change because since the creation of Gateway West, nothing has happened except the dentist's office that's under construction right now.
Right.
Well, is you holding?
That's in the industrial.
Industrial West.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah.
So I, one thing that bothers me is just that they, of the things they are considering, so much of it's developer-driven. And they've gotten citizen input about building height, and I would be much happier with them responding to that than to responding to a developer saying, I don't want to be in the new plan when when the plan is based on what the residents of Williston want. So that it concerned me how strong a voice the developers have had.
Yeah, I agree. I I I felt a little bit like I wasn't able to go to the August 23rd meeting of the select board. I have been in person for all the other times that they were talking about form-based code and I, you know, knowing some of the select board members for quite a long time in different parts of life, like through the school or you know, other committees or whatever. I felt like you know, I mean, maybe I'm misreading this, but it felt a little bit like my presence was noted and and I was kind of like representing the planning commission and and that you know, all of our work was sort of embodied in that and and represented in some way. And I, I, you know, I'm frustrated that the night that I wasn't there, one time I couldn't go, right? Like, then all this stuff gets kind of shuffled through. I agree with you too, Chapin, that I think, like, I was kind of surprised that they weren't pulling back on the building height. I think that a lot of us felt that there was still some potential flexibility with the number of stories. Not, I mean, I understand what they're trying to do with the maximum height, and that's fine with me. I really expected them to respond more to the residents' complaints about the stories, the number of stories. And I'm a little surprised that they didn't. I'm not necessarily saying I wish they would because I I do think, I do believe in in the, you know, the concentrated development. But but I understand too that I might be an outlier and the residents have concerns about five-story buildings or five and a bit, five and an attic. And and you know, we weren't united completely on that either. So that's where I thought there would be some wiggle room for the select board and that that's where I thought they would respond. I was kind of hoping that they would hold the line on the boundary issues as as you mentioned as well. I don't know if other people have thoughts about this you'd like to share.
And by the way, I'm totally aware that Kate was strongly for fewer stories than Kate, and it bothered me to not to be have that tension. And if they were to lower everything by one, I would be equally happy with I, I want to say that the, there's been times that I've had significant disagreements with people on the select board. The people who are on it right now, I think all of them are really kind and good people. And so I don't like having conflict with them, but I just feel like they're making decisions for the wrong reasons, that they're not quite getting it, and I don't know how to how to help with that because the same thing happened in my view with the energy plan. How long that took for them to adopt and then how they said, right, adopting it, they weren't necessarily going to fund the number one thing, which was an energy coordinator. And then they used COVID as a reason why they couldn't put it in the budget for a second year. It's just it went two years without being funded. Almost two years because they wound up doing it before the end of the second year. But I just, I feel like that was another time when they didn't. And and yes, they have to answer to the public that says they want low taxes, but when we have the lowest municipal tax rate in the county, it's hard to justify that argument for not doing something that that they've agreed, you know what I mean?
And they don't have any data to suggest Chapin that the tax rate would go up because the developer had to follow form-based code. That is goofiness.
And No, I meant that about the, I meant that about the energy coordinator, yeah.
Oh, okay. I was like, what? But I agree with you. I feel the same way that they're not that they are weighing the opinions of certain powerful landowners in the community over that of many, many, many other community members who participated and worked to create a vision.
Well, as Jeff Ferris told us, right, they would be the last people to push back over six stories because it makes all their land more valuable. So if that sticks around, it's all all three of those decisions serve their interest. And I think that's incredibly frustrating. I mean, that's not the way this process was designed to be.
It's developer privilege.
Yeah, any other comments or thoughts there? I don't really know what we do with these thoughts. I guess we we, you know, one thing is that, you know, it will go to a public hearing and we're part of that. We're we're part of the public. And go ahead.
When we were talking with Chris Snyder and he said that he's planning to use net gas for all heat in in those buildings and he's not planning to install any heat pumps. He didn't say gas is a backup heat source. He said gas is the heat source. And it, and he just said, that's the way I can, basically saying that's the way I can make money. And to me, if he had more of the form-based code designed to his buildings, he could make more money and be more energy efficient. But he it just, it feels like he's stuck in that paradigm and I don't know how to get him out of it if we don't change the rules of engagement. So I guess the following question that is, how do we get somebody who's about to build three hundred and eighty homes in Williston? I can't remember if that's the right number, but it's three hundred and some homes in Williston to do it more energy efficiently and with less reliance on fossil fuel heat?
Has anybody sat down with Chris and asked that question?
Well, we pretty much asked him when he was before us and it wasn't I, but somebody said, how are you going to heat these buildings? I think I might have been wrong.
Yeah, it's a tough forum in which to get someone to change their mind, right? Like, I heard you, you know, there's only three really large developers in Williston, and if one of your sort of primary goals is to get them to reduce their energy usage, having just a one-on-one meeting and asking them, hey, what would it take? Might be a very valuable way to engage. They're not pinned against the wall in a public hearing, you know, that's a tough place to make change happen.
I tried to do that about encouraging bus service at Finney Crossing and got pushed off and pushed off and finally met with the partner who's on the planning, who's on the DRB.
Chris Snyder, Scott Riley.
Scott Riley, finally did have a meeting with Scott Riley, which was productive, but I I just can't see, it just feels like the wall is so impenetrable. I feel like it has to be somebody who can have something for, that's in it for him, for Chris, for him to be willing to entertain what isn't. It seems like he just wants to keep doing what he's do, has done before. It's like a formula.
Yeah, I mean, that that's that business. That business is relatively low margin per unit, large number of units. You know, I sort of make money by cutting. And and to be frank, you know, demand is for natural gas, right? I mean, like, his customers aren't calling him up, being like, I'm not going to buy this house. It's worth fifty thousand dollars less to me if it doesn't have solar. They're saying to him, get me off of propane. Right? And a lot, large number of the people moving into these units. So, you know, as far as he's concerned, it's it's the lowest cost, highest demand option. So we either have to change the rules, which we were doing a good job of, but but maybe not far enough. Or we have to find a way to make it in his sort of enlightened self-interest, right?
That's a good point is we could put our energy behind getting the public to demand that they're not going to buy unless and and in fact, it's for the homeowner, it's more convenient to have heat pumps because they have much better cooling in the summer than they can get when new air conditioners.
Yeah, or you work partner with VEIC to create some sort of rebate program that makes it cheaper for him to install heat pumps, or you partner with the town to provide a tax abatement for energy efficient units or or or, you know, expansion of the growth caps for for properties that meet certain energy requirements. A lot of tools we have at our disposal to sort of, you know, incentivize this type of.
The rebates, the rebates are already there.
For builders?
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we do have some incentives. I mean, I haven't read our energy plan lately, but you know, there were definitely some pushes in that direction. But maybe you're right. I mean, maybe what we need to do, especially when we move the energy plan from an appendix into the town plan, which will happen as we develop our next town plan. You know, maybe that has to become more of a, you know, set of criteria for for development rather than just that you get bonus points for X, Y, and Z. It would be really a a demand. So that that's a good suggestion.
I'll make one other suggestion, which is just, you know, at a very broad level, like we we should take some lessons from this surprise in the form-based code. So I agree generally with all of the comments. Except I don't feel as surprised as everybody else that the that the select board made these changes, right? They have friends, as as any, you know, politically connected person will to a large land developer in the area, et cetera. Like, you know, I'm not surprised at all they made these changes and and maybe we could have embraced the development community a little bit more. And if there had been one or two of the developers that had gone in in full support of this, this would have turned out very differently. So maybe the Energy Commission can take some some lessons and we can for future changes.
Yeah, good points. Other thoughts? We kind of wrap this up in a minute or so.
One of the things they've asked for that wasn't on the list is a well-documented procedure for transparent and rapid revisions to the regulating plan and the zoning, which we've all talked about and say we want to encourage because we decided it should be in the code and not in special plans and stuff, specific plans and stuff. So that it's for sure, but we also don't want that to mean that it's too rigid.
Yeah, we'll have to figure out what.
I think that that falls to staff, I think, to to work on, but I think we're all in agreement, yes.
Yeah, we've moved that over and it probably would be a you know, iteration of what we kind of use for a discretionary permit application or a specific plan application on, here's the level of detail that the developer would need to be provide, provide. So have you delineated your your wetland constraints and that sort of thing? So the application that they submit isn't of enough quality that the planning commission can you know, act on it with some some good faith and the lessons that we learned through the NECAS specific plan will influence that and that there's just kind of like a principal document on. You know, it'll be turned over to the select board in a certain amount of time.
What what's interesting to me is it's a really good rule of thumb that you never want to be zoning for any specific person or landowner or something. And yet here we're saying a specific developer, we would in fact alter the zoning in a sense for them. But it's in the same way that we would do a specific plan, which is, is it for the greater good?
Right, so there need to be very clear benefits and yeah, okay. Good, okay, well, we will look forward to what Matt has to say and take this to the next step and you know, I I hope that we can continue to influence this and even when they kick it back to us. It doesn't necessarily mean that we have to you know, just without further explanation, really kind of push push them on a couple of points so we can, we can look into how to do that. Okay, um. So Emily, I've
I think because they're asking presumably for significant changes, it has to be rewarned. Are there any applications that have come in since that would then be able to get in under the old zoning?
No, it's just Chris's application.
Thanks.
Good to know. Emily, your, your agenda that I don't have. There was something at seven fifty or seven forty-five.
Yeah, so the remainder of the meeting tonight is the work plan survey and discussion. Matt shared the survey responses that came in as of today. And there were three, you know, broad brush questions about why you serve on the planning commission and what issues face Williston and what initiatives the town should take going forward. This is sort of like a precursor to thinking broad brush about our our remaining work plan before the next town plan gets written. And by spring of 2023, we'll begin working on the town plan with the goal of completing it and salivating it to the select board in fall of 2024.
So we know we have the town plan and we know in doing that, we're going to incorporate the energy plan from it being independence and a couple of the things that came up there were really interesting to me. Two of us said things about population pressure, how are we going to deal with population pressure? And I think also on our shortlist is inclusionary zoning.
So I just wanted to say that the part of this survey actually had its roots in a discussion that Matt and I had in the spring. And really came out of a desire on my part to in a way, kind of get to know each other a little better as planning commission members. Partly because you know, with COVID, we're often zooming and, you know, I don't think this particular group has ever been in the room together. And so I thought it would be helpful if we kind of understood a little bit, you know, what what someone's motivations for coming on to the planning commission were, what are their particular you know, issues or parts of town or other kinds of things like that, that that motivate them, that they'd really like to see some, some, you know, shift on. And so that that first question is kind of, kind of represents that that desire. That desire on on my part to to have us. Gain a better understanding of each other's um kind of motivations and interests. And so I wondered if we could, especially since Matt's not here yet, now back, I don't know if he will be. Um, if we could uh kind of just talk through that a little bit. And and maybe people will be wanting to share what what uh motivates them to to join the. Planning Commission to s- to serve on it and and then also like what are some. I don't know, sort of like pet issues or, you know, things that you're particularly interested in or or concerned about. Um, and and would like to put some effort into. So um, we'd like to start.
I really enjoyed reading the ones that were there.
Yeah, I really enjoyed reading them too. Chip, do you wanna go ahead?
I'm always willing to go, but I also don't wanna always go first.
Oh, you can break the ice.
Okay, I I was one of the responses, which is that was to me a lot about civic duty. And wanting to see the aspirations of Williston's residents be met in the future. Um, and so it's to me very worthwhile community betterment work. Um, and I'm at the point of that last third of my life where I'm giving back to the community more than. I'm not trying to make money or um get ahead in any way, and so it's a time to reflect and. Work for the betterment of the community as a whole. And it's hard work and it's not clear and simple and it's complex and often things are conflicting. And um tho- those are the things we wind up having to work on, like the conflict between developers and. People not wanting things to change and the population pressure and so forth. So uh, that's where I'm at.
Thanks. Somebody else wanna chime in?
I'll go.
Go ahead, Joe.
This was, I mean, planning commission seemed like a good spot for me to dive in, to be active in a community in a way that. Not being a Vermonter, um and also not thinking, um, you know, sort of what was the capacity for where my life was when I moved here. But it's in not every town in Vermont, I feel like being on a planning commission is interesting because sometimes there's not a lot going on, you know, like the town that my. In-laws are from, there's just, you know, but Wilson is a place that just seemed like there was a lot, a lot to be offered in terms of what it is. What it used to be when you look at some of those historic pictures of it and and um what it then could be. So I think for me, it was a way to sort of um figure out, figure out Vermont a little bit more and come to understand this town that I now live in and call home. Uh, and then use some of my interests and and uh skills. So I feel like i- in the time that I've served and then re-upping my service again, I have learned a lot just about what's going on. And and the community at large, he- hearing from people when they come to public comment and the way people introduce themselves or what they choose to discuss. Or what, you know, kind of what gets their their heart beating or what gets their their passion soaring. Um, you see the diversity of this community and and all that, you know, all the possibilities and potentials of it. Um, and it's exciting because I'm, you know, we have a young family and we see like what we'd like the community to become. And I think um I like being a part of, you know, I like being aware of it for one, but I also like being a part of shaping it in a little way.
Great, thank you so much. Someone else wanna chime in? Some thoughts along those lines? Go ahead, Shayla.
Very similar to Jill, so I don't wanna repeat her, but um, yeah, I was fairly new to Williston. But definitely hoping to live here for a long time and wanting to get to know it and wanting to, you know, be active in. The future of it. Um, and this feels, sometimes my work is not super tangible. And this is feels very tangible, but um also it's some really nice longevity, hopefully, with some of the things that we've been placed like Form Based Code. Um, and I love learning new stuff, so I don't, my background's public health and I hope I can bring that lens, but I don't have a planning one. So it's really fun to learn that. And it's made a lot easier by the fact not just that it's interesting, like Jill said, we have really wonderful staff. Which is awesome. Um, I think it would be very difficult to do this in a place where that was not the case, um as somebody who doesn't have a uh deep background in it.
Well, so I'd like to. Share. Feel like when I'm running one of my college classes, go ahead, Ellie.
Sure, I'm a bit of echoing in here, but um I was motivated to join because of a feeling of, you know, civic duty. And wanting to participate and be engaged in the community, um and really wanting to learn more about decision-making processes and. Um, you know, um, how, you know, how does just how a decision-making works um in the town. And um I grew up in Williston, um so I I feel like I bring the experience of having lived um or been a part of town. In some capacity for the last thirty years and wanting to stay here. And so, you know, I do have an interest in seeing what happens in the next, you know, thirty plus years as well. So um there's that. And then I also, um, you know, I I live in the um Form Based Code District. And um so I don't know, I felt very connected to um that whole conversation, which was definitely, which was obviously happening when I joined. And so um, now it's exciting, it's exciting work and. Um, yeah, happy to be a part of it.
That's great, thank you. Yeah, it's it's definitely awesome having like a lifelong Willistonian. Um, but someone who's young. And so that's really nice perspective to have in here. Um, Kate, do you wanna, oh, go ahead, Alex.
Sorry, I didn't wanna mean to jump at you there, but um, yeah, this I I've have a lot of this success and experience in the business world. And and I had effectively zero civic experience walking into this, one of those people who just, you know, would apply for a permit and grumble about. You know, the whole process I had to go through and how bureaucratic and awful it was. And I decided it would be interesting to both give back to the community uh with some of my time that I now have these days. And uh some of my experience and at the same time learn how this whole process works and and how to. And it's, you know, it's been a great educational experience as well as a chance to to provide perspective and represent. You know, my neighbors' views to town, to the development community, et cetera.
Awesome, thank you. Kate, you wanna go next?
Sure, um, well, it's funny because uh originally I wanted to join uh the planning commission. Because um I just could not believe that you guys did not have drive-throughs. It it was, it was a, I I didn't, when I moved here, I we moved from Oklahoma and there was drive-throughs literally every ten feet. I mean, it it was insane. Um, but the point was is that I came here and I was like, I can't get a coffee when I'm dropping off my my kid to daycare. And I was wondering, you know, why that, why that was. And so as I looked into it and so forth, um, I just came across the the planning commission. And um I thought what a cool thing to be able to to join, to be able to. Um, make a positive impact in the community, both by trying to maintain the positive aspects of the town. And also trying to um change the the maybe not so positive um aspects of the town. And um I have to say that it has been an amazing immensely, um. I have just learned so much from the experience, um, oh, way more than I I ever anticipated. So it's been a, it's been a very good experience to be able to speak um with staff and other commissioners. Um, both sharing and disagreeing, um and how much it has helped me to grow as a person and as a resident, so.
That's great. Wow, I'm I'm just so glad we did this, actually. Um, so I'll go last here. Um, I think you all know I joined in two thousand ten, I think, that's my first year. No, eleven, two thousand eleven. Anyway, um, I initially got on planning commission. Because I had been doing some of some research, actually, and as part of my my professional work. Around issues of inclusive communities for children. And there's a, there's a global movement toward um something called child-friendly cities that I was involved with. I had been to international conferences in Hague and Stuttgart and all a bunch of different European sites. The UN is really active in this field and the US is way, way behind, like we have almost nothing, nobody's ever heard of it. And so I was really motivated by that. I my research has shifted since then, but because of that. Um, I got involved in creating, I actually ran a couple of like youth-based participatory mapping. Um, events with kids in Williston before our two thousand. Uh, let's see, ten plan. And so, and then I brought the results of like, what do kids in Williston want? In their community, essentially, uh I brought that to the planning commission and I was like, okay, here's what the kids want, you know. And here was my my methodology and, you know, and here's here's some y- young people's voices. Um, and they were like, okay, yeah, yeah, that's very nice. And then nothing really happened. And I was kind of frustrated, so I, so then the planner at the time, which was Ken, uh, he was like, well, why don't you get on the commission? Then you can do stuff. And so I did. Um, and even though my research areas have shifted away from that, I still really firmly believe in the principles of. Of um, the idea is that, you know, uh, by making communities um and environments. Friendly to some of the most vulnerable residents, you improve the quality of life and the standard of living for all other residents as well. Um, so, so, yeah, and then like. Uh, just have really learned so, so much, even though I have some background in a sort of planning adjacent. Profession and field of urban geography, um like this, the applied and specific. Bureau bureaucratic and policy angles I really didn't know as much about. Um, and so that has been just incredibly helpful. And I now, I've actually started a concentration of of essentially a curriculum. Um, that UVM students can follow and uh from there either apply to planning jobs. Or um planning graduate programs, so. Um, so I've had a bunch of students go into planning in part because of my experience here, which has been great. And uh, yeah, so, well, this is, this is awesome. Um, and I I feel already like I kind of understand some of you a little better and and feel like we're more um connected a bit. So thank you so much for indulging me on this and um I wanna go back now to the document. The survey and maybe think about more specific um issues. And maybe Emily, you could share that again so that we can see like specific things that people are concerned about or would like to work on. Or think we should pay attention to, yeah.
Can I say something as Emily does that? Um, two things, what is, I don't know if you want Emily to say to answer the same question.
Oh, that's a great idea.
But before she does, I just wanted to say that um, I love this group of people and how different we are. I'm glad that we're all different ages and um come from different backgrounds. We don't have anybody on this group is who is a developer or sort of has that background or is in um retail, I don't think. Um, so I don't think we represent everything bal- in a balanced way, but I really, what Kate said resonates with me, which I learned a lot from. Even though I'm old and have a lot of experience, I learn a lot from what people think and there's so much depth of everybody's individual experience. Um, and I find myself disagreeing, say with Shayla about dispensaries of marijuana. And disagree with Kate about something about uh the environment. But um I feel like um it, everybody rubs off on me. And um, so I'm really glad that we are as diverse as we are. And I appreciate that.
Great, thank you. Thanks, Chip. And yeah, Emily, you wanna share? How did you get into planning?
Oh, uh, well, it goes way back to high school when I was doing my Girl Scout Gold Award. Uh, my mentor was the sustainability coordinator for the city of about a hundred thousand people that I lived in, um, Roanoke, Virginia. And my gold award project was putting up interpretive signage along. Uh, the Roanoke River pathway, so basically a multi-use path like what Wilson has, but going through the whole city along the river. Um, and I coordinated with the Salem City Planner, so that's how I learned about planning, put it on my college application. Studied it through college, um had several midlife crises about it, about, I guess, three midlife, because I'm still young. But um it combines, you know, political science and humanitarian issues and environmental issues. And uh, human psychology about good urban place design, like every major you could wanna study and could be interested in. All seemed to me to converge in um studying urban planning. Um, and I continue to do it because I like helping communities authentically give back to their community. Um, in a world of, you know, fake news and big issues. It's nice to be able to come together at a community and and seek truth, seek data on the local level. And um, provide that that feedback back to um a community and and local government, I think, is where. A lot of good change can be made to to build, you know, strength for place and um have a lot of impact.
That's great, thank you. Thanks for for sharing. Um. Hey, so can we turn back to the survey responses um and think a little bit more about those? And um Emily, as I said, I don't have that agenda, so I'm not sure how, what our timing looks like.
Page width, um screen width.
Yeah, so this was the first question, why do you serve on the planning commission? And then the second question, planning staff will begin data collection, project planning and budgeting for the next town plan this fall. By the spring of twenty twenty-three, the planning commission will begin its work to create the town plan with a goal of completing the draft. Um, fall of twenty twenty-four. What are some of the issues facing Williston in the future? Say out to twenty fifty that you think the town plan will need to address?
Did folks have a chance to look through some of the answers and? Think about them a little bit? Sorry, I'm struggling with my. My um screen. Go ahead, Jill.
Oh, I am responsible for quite a few of them, so I can elaborate if anyone needs me to. Um, I just, when they said twenty fifty, I really was thinking like climate and lots of things I think could be really intense by then. So um pulling on some of my experience in a large city that was already doing some serious resiliency hub kind of work. Um, that was sort of a reference to that. If if density is what we anticipate it to be with building and development, um having those types of thing on our radar, I think. Would be important um and innovative. I think there'd be funding for that sort of thing because it is looking to a future that we all hope doesn't happen, but is happening.
Jill, what was the city you were in before?
Baltimore City and so the city government and um my portfolio included the city planning department. And so there was quite a few like, you know, a sustainability coordinator like uh Emily was talking about and and folks that were doing some really innovative stuff. Um, across different swastika city that had really high need.
Yeah, that's a a really um complicated city. Yeah, in so many ways.
Today, so um, but I think, you know, as Chip mentioned earlier, how tough it was to even just get an energy planner to be funded. Um, where are we then as a town? Um, where are we then as a town? If that took the delay and, you know, it's like some of these things, people might think, maybe that's absurd, that's not worth it, but I don't, I don't think it is. I don't think, um, especially if we are hoping to have more people kind of crowded downtown and, um, so having resources for them that are walkable, that are for extreme, you know, and, and resiliency centers there in the city, we're doing everything from having a dialysis unit to, you know, things that you really need in a crisis when you cannot get where you need to go, what do you need to do to keep people alive? That's kind of what they were built around. Um, and they were in places that people were familiar with. So if it was in a community that was heavily religious, then it would be held at, that you would be built into the church. So the church would then receive generators and solar power and things that were great for the church to have year round, but it would be a resiliency hub that would be then tasked by the emergency unit for the city when an emergency was strike. And most often we use it on extreme heat days or, um, you know, a snowstorm, because snow there just shuts everything down, but, you know, they were used at least, you know, three, five times a year and, um, it also is just a big rallying point for those communities. They're able to come and give meals and they're able to like, you know, kids are able to have activities. It's just, it's kind of, um, when people are in a moment, it kind of brings people together, even if it's kind of a, a scary moment.
Yeah, that's such a great point. Um, I, I totally agree with you on the, on the resiliency hubs. Um, and and yet I also think that there would be ways that we could incorporate them into something like community center. Um, where as you say, you know, they're kind of like year-round.
Yeah, serve the community.
You know, services. Um, I keep thinking of, we had a conversation, it was a couple of years ago now at this point. I think when we were talking about the energy plan the first time, um, I was imagining how great it would be if we had a sort of, if we expanded the notion of what a library is and, and had like lots of different material things that people might often use just very short period of time or only need occasionally. And, you know, um, I, there, you know, Burlington, for instance, has like a tool library and, um, a lot of places will have like a toy library or um, other kinds of, you know, child-oriented products or whatever. Um, but I was thinking how, uh, how that, that could be linked into one of these kinds of resiliency hubs because it brings, really the resiliency is all about enabling people to support each other. Um, we saw that so clearly in COVID and I think that was a really important, um, alert for a lot of us that we aren't so, you know, independent and, um, you know, I can, I can take care of myself and my family. I don't need any help kind of attitude. I, you know, I think we all realize like, oh my gosh, we really do have to be, be, um, in a very different mode of thinking. And, uh, so it would be interesting to, to kind of build off those insights that we've all learned from pandemic to expand our kind of community level support. And I see, I see the planning commission as having a role in that because we, we can help to shape the places where those things can happen. And we could, you know, help bring visions of those things into public documents and into public deliberation, which would be really fantastic.
Yeah. Oh, I think it, and to your point with like public health and COVID, a resiliency center could also be a vaccination site. You know, you, you create a space that then becomes a hub for all sorts of services and resources that then in moments need to sort of be able to gear up quickly. The community's already identified them. There's pathways to plow them quickly, you know, all the sort of like routes and things you need to think through regardless of year, whether you've sorted through in your emergency planning system and, and they're there. And the, and the people have a win, you know, if you're a community center who never could have afforded heat pumps and air conditioning, but now you get this grant on the town to install this stuff because you're signing up to be a part of this resiliency hub. It's a win-win for those folks, um, and which is why, you know, if you have the momentum and the right staff behind it and some of the resources and funding, um, it can kind of take off.
That's such a fascinating idea. I'm, I'm really, um, excited to think about it more as we move into the town plan and, and consider ways that we could maybe incorporate some of those principles. Other thoughts and ideas of what we should be paying attention to? We've got the, the bookends here. We have the extreme weather resiliency hubs and then we have dog parks.
That was also me.
I love it.
Yeah. I attended some meeting when I first moved here and it was just like on Front Porch Forum about like who has a dog and wants to do this. And dog parks was my world in a city, you know, like you'd have to really trek out to go on a hike with your dog. And so when I came here and I was like, I mean, I thought Shelburne was a dream because it was like acres of land with fully formed mature trees. And I was like, wow, if this is a dog park in Vermont, that's fantastic. But then when I started really looking, there weren't that many dog parks and, um, you know, and just, if you've probably seen in the news and everywhere else, they really have skyrocketed. We're losing vets, we're losing services. It's like, if we're gonna, and we learned things from Hurricane Katrina that people aren't gonna leave in crises without their animals. They wanna take care of their animals no matter what. If we're gonna build density in Taff Corners, we have to serve those furry creatures because people have them, they just do. And our state and our region, it's like a very high percentage. It's, you know, we win those, all those stats about per capita and it's true. There's just a lot of furry creatures around here and we have, you know, we have nothing. We don't have, Essex is the closest one and it sucks.
That's interesting. Yeah. And I, I, I take your point about, um, you know, actually decreasing car trips.
Walk your dog, walk out the door, go to a space where you can, whatever, answer your email and your dog plays with it. You meet people. It's a great way to be social in a time when people are having a hard time meeting people, you know, it's just, it becomes.
Just maybe we need to incorporate it into the extreme weather resiliency hub.
Maybe, yeah, right next door.
And dog park.
And dog park, yeah.
If I, uh, quick question, Megan, this document, I didn't, I didn't see this linked in the agenda that went out or anything. And I have missed a couple of meetings, so I, I hadn't seen these prior to this.
Yeah. So this was, um, a survey, Matt just sent the link out to the survey, uh, when was that? Friday, maybe? Um, and so then the, uh, the results were only today, so you were not behind, if you didn't see it. Um, I happened to be leaving campus and saw that there was a new message on my emails, so I, uh, you know, put aside a couple of minutes before our meeting started to read through them, but, um, it, it was a little last minute, so no, no shame there. Um, and, and, but feel free to like chime in if there are things that you would like. Um, yeah, Emily, if you can keep that question uh, showing, then.
Would, uh, I, I'd love to answer it offline. Matt said he'd leave the survey open in that email.
Yeah.
Now see, but there's no link to it in that email and I can't find the original. So Emily, or if somebody can just redistribute the link.
It was in the chat. It's in the chat right now.
Oh, it's in the chat.
I did, I chatted the PDF of the responses. I'll also send that.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yeah. Yes, I think it's an ongoing conversation, you know, I don't think it's like, uh, something we need to feel like we're done with tonight or that, you know, that you know, if you miss saying it, that it'll forever be off the town plan of twenty twenty-four.
Of course, I'm just, I'd love to sit down and think about the answers.
Absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
And to me, this, we get some of our, um, collective wisdom about what we should be thinking about so that we don't have blind spots. And then looking at that bigger list than what each of us thought of, um, it really does help set priorities. What are we going to address and at what timeframe?
Emily, something weird happened to your screen.
Yeah, I. All the tabs.
Fine. Are there other issues that, uh, anyone would like to speak up for or that you've thought about?
But the ones on the bottom of the screen are the ones I put in, by the way, that I numbered.
Do you wanna speak to any of those, Chippen?
I don't think so. I think they all should be familiar.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and that last question is really a key one. So many people in Williston, when we get input, just want things to stay the way they are, or actually they prefer they go back to the way they were. And yet we have this development pressure on us and we've been trying to funnel it towards the Taff Corners area, but that's a limited solution and is that really the solution? So I do think we, and whoever said population growth, that goes right with it. There's also, um, climate migration. We do have people moving to Williston because they're wanting to get out of where they are.
Yeah. Yeah. And this is, I mean, this is kind of like, there are a lot of places that are dealing with this kind of issue, um, and we can certainly learn from those other places. Um, but I think in the context of Vermont, it's also something that, uh, we're, it's kind of a good problem to have in some ways because there are so many towns where there, they have lost a lot of population and there's, there's very few jobs available there, you know? Um, people are having to drive very long distances to find employment. Um, and they would love maybe some additional population. Um, but, you know, that said, it's, uh, it, I, you know, a lot of the places that I've lived where there have been efforts to contain growth in various ways. Um, it has ended up becoming very elitist. So I lived in Boulder, Colorado for five years when I was in graduate school and they had, uh, essentially a sort of growth moratorium. And all it did was make housing extremely expensive within Boulder and it, it sparked enormous sprawl. Um, if you've been there in the past few years, there is now no distinction between the, what they call a conurbation from Boulder to Denver. It's just all developed. And, uh, that's largely because of, you know, general broader national trends and pressures. Um, but on a kind of micro scale, it didn't help that Boulder was very strict about growth control. So there are definitely risks with that. It, not just elitist, but very expensive and, um, kind of monocultural. Uh, when, when that happens and then you end up essentially having folks who are marginalized in one way or another, uh, having to live far away in different places. And, and I think that our public meetings have shown us that that is not where we wanna go. And there's always gonna be some trend in that direction. People will always have to trade off transportation costs and housing costs, but, um, I think we were proactive with some of these things like inclusionary zoning and the, and if some of these, you know, larger, uh, housing facilities and, and cool buildings that we're hoping for and form-based code, if some of those get built, you know, maybe we can counteract some of those pressures.
Megan, can I?
Yeah, absolutely. Go ahead.
Um, those are all great points and I just had a chance to sort of Ctrl F the document for a second and, and you, you brought up a really good point about jobs. And one thing I, I haven't seen in any of the responses and will surely make it into mine is, you know, I, I do think it's important that we think about creating a diverse economic base and how planning intersects with that. Right? What we allow, what we restrict, you know, people, a, a town can have a lot of demand like this, so long as there are jobs. Right? And so, you know, without the jobs or, or with the jobs are always far away, things with town will, will struggle. So I think that that's an important thing that probably belongs on the, on the list of priorities, at least my two cents.
Okay, thanks. Chippen, go ahead.
I wanted to say two things. One is that, um, the one way to control growth that works is not to have sewer. The, the limits of sewer systems control growth incredibly. Um, even the, the, you know, people try to control growth in other ways and it always breaks down. Um, effluent is the only way that doesn't break down. It's, it's a sad statement, but it's true. Yeah.
Yeah, I could, I could name a lot of towns in Michigan that didn't stop growing in spite of, you know, so.
Yeah.
Unfortunately, even that's often not enough.
Okay. And the affluent don't like the effluent.
That's right.
The, um, the other thing I wanted to say is that just the way we had trouble getting funding for an energy coordinator who I think is gonna save the town money in the long term by being more energy efficient and generating more power, um, in municipal projects. Um, in addition to meeting the climate goals, I feel as though we have set up with form-based code a future where the town needs to buy some green space or have it be there. And we need to provide more infrastructure than we do now. And we haven't identified a funding source. Um, most dense village centers or town centers, uh, created something like a TIF DIX, you know, a tax district, um, where basically the increased value of the properties um, generates more revenue in real estate taxes and that additional revenue because the increased value goes towards paying for more services to go with it. We haven't identified something like that for Taff Corners and we sort of were on a collision course. And if you think about some of the other things that were listed just now, um, and some of the things Joe was talking about, like having people to deal, have an arts coordinator or whatever to improve quality of life or have more opportunities for people to have a, um, community center we talked about. All of those things cost money and we haven't identified how they would be funded. And it's pretty clear that our select board is, and, and the town in general is loathe to spend money for, for good reasons, but, um, it's, it's a, it's a hurdle for any goal that we are trying to work on. And so I feel like we may need to spend some time working about how to finance the things that the community says they want, but which don't have a funding source.
Yeah, those are all great points. Other thoughts or issues you'd like to raise?
Um, and I haven't, I, I don't have this in an articulate manner. Jill's is much more articulate, but I, I do like the idea of helping to support some sort of center, like a, a place of gathering that, that does have services and support and, um, also fun. Um, and I, and I know we just did the big, the, the form-based code and I felt that that was incredibly important and that we should not sort of try to use that in, um, in a way that would involve funding exactly because of what Chippen talked about, but I do think that that, that if we went that way, would probably require money. And, um, so I'm curious of combining those two things and figuring out how to, you know, do things going forward that are going to be very beneficial for the town, but, but might cost money. And on that same, um, vein, but much more discreet, I definitely wanna go back and figure out how Williston can support, um, affordable housing. Um, I don't think we did that as fully and as well as we could. And I heard everybody say that, can do it all at once. Um, but I really feel very strongly that we have to make sure we address that. I'd, I'd love to do it this year. Um, and, and again, I don't have a great way of how to do that, um, but I do, I do think we, I, I feel very committed to. I, I feel very committed to finding a way to, to, to do that in a very real and concrete manner. Um, and I think we have the tools to do it. Um. And to Alex, it's a very good point. We should probably get the developers involved early on. Um, because it would probably involve them. Um, so those are my two wildly different.
That's great. Emily, have we heard from the CCRPC on the um? Uh, was it that there's some name for the study that needs to be done before you can start talking about inclusionary zoning? Have we heard back from them yet or? Where is that?
So that's um, the housing needs assessment. Um, I'm not sure specifically, re- recently, there's been um, a shakeup at CCRPC. So Regina Mahoney, who was the planning program manager. Um, is now the Essex um, town manager or city manager. And Taylor Newton, who is working with us on the form-based code, is now going to be the program planning manager. So they're trying to figure out their own. Internal structure. Um, we submitted a lot of UPWP requests, so I'm not sure. How things are going to shake out, but I know Matt's kind of like, hey, we'll de-prioritize some of these other. Projects, if that means the housing needs assessment happens. Um, so I'm not sure where it's at. Um. But I know Matt is adamant about, you know, wanting to get that project rolling with CCRPC.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, I think, you know, to Sheila's point also, that is something we heard again and again in all of our public outreach. Um, was that people are very concerned about affordable housing and. Uh, and so we, you know, there are concrete steps we can take and hopefully they're. Starting and we can, we can continue to. To follow those, but I, I would encourage all of us to, to also think creatively, like just because there is this path of. Um, you know, housing needs assessment and then you can talk about inclusionary zoning, like, okay, well, that could be one pathway out of several. That we try to um, address the issue. So.
Yeah, and I think that's a great segue to the last question. How much of the planning commission's time and effort in the near, near future will be spent on the next town plan? Are there other initiatives you would like the planning commission to tackle in the near future? So. Yes, on tackling housing needs assessment and inclusion and zoning. Um, yes, obviously unwrapping up village bylaw. But what are the other things you want to work out? Um. Matt put it one way, you have twenty-three, roughly twenty-three meetings a year, and if each meeting is two hours. That's forty-six hours of meeting. So how do you prioritize these limited moments to be most effective? Um, recognizing that. A specific plan application could get submitted that needs to be addressed. Um, what are the other goals that the planning commission wants to work on?
If we do need to budget time to review um, proposals to change the regulating plan and the form-based code. To, we're, we're expecting that.
Yeah.
Yeah, we've always got sort of routine requests and um. Not, not just specific plans, those are anything but routine, I hope. But um. You know, other kinds of requests from the public. Um. So. Yeah, it, this is really helpful to balance it. Could you scroll down a little bit, Emily, so we can see the other? Answers to this. Maybe, I don't know, for me, it's enormously huge. I don't know if it needs to be quite that large of there. That's better. Um. Yeah, this is my, my pet issue is.
Last one.
What's that?
Last one, right?
Yeah, yeah, the, 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 um, you know, much better recreational um, connections in town. Um, the obvious one being between the village and Taff Corners. I feel like we've been talking about that since I joined the planning commission and. You know, every once in a while, some tiny. Bit of progress is made and then it just disintegrates. Um. So I, I just want to really keep that on the front burner. Um, and I feel like in part that. That connects to so many other things like the healthy communities piece with our. Um, uh, that, that um, what was that called? The health amendment. In our town plan that we did a couple of years ago. When the. Public health folks came in. Um.
Yeah.
And. The uh, you know, and just in terms of climate change and. Enabling better non-motorized transportation or e-bikes or whatever it might be. Um, I feel like having. Good connections is essential. And uh, yes, they're not always. Year-round kinds of things, but um, even, even so, we need to be thinking those directions. Um. And just to make it more pleasant, I think too, like people want. I was amazed when, right when I moved to, to um, Williston, it was right as they built. The final piece connecting the path that goes. Uh, you know, along Route Two and then up uh, Old Stage Road and then across Mountain View and then down. Uh, North Williston Road. And it was incredible. It was like, within a day of them finishing the paving. There were just people and walking their dogs and little kids riding bikes and. Older folks walking and like, everybody in Williston was out there walking and it hasn't stopped. And that was two thousand six. Or seven or something like that. And uh, and you know, it's just kind of the thing where like you. You build a good facility. It doesn't have to be super fancy, but you just build it in a logical way. That helps you connect and they, you know, they come out and use it and, and people are healthier and more connected because of it. Um, so I, that's my little plug for. Recreation and bike and pedestrian advocacy. Go ahead, Chapin.
Um, that, I just wanted to reflect that Kevin Batson used to go to bat all the time for more stuff. And after we bonded for doing more sidewalks and rep paths, we then didn't spend the money we bonded for. And that pre-COVID, we, the select board asked for input after they got repeated requests to plow more sidewalks. They asked for input at the town meeting. Got a hundred percent input that we should do more plowing. You know, we built the sidewalks, we should plow them, we should encourage people that. It meets all of our town goals to encourage people to use sidewalks in the winter. Um, and yet they then deferred purchasing a second snow sidewalk plow another year after that. And so I feel as though. Um, the stuff about paths and about plowing our existing tasks. Is a real, one of those hurdles and it's, it comes down to relatively small budget items that. The second plow and the time for somebody about ten hours per storm to plow all the additional. Lanes that are asked for. It, it just seems strange to me that it's that difficult. Also, everything we build should be plowable by pickup truck with a plow the way the rep path is because that's so much less expensive. To plow than having a sidewalk plow deal with concrete sidewalk that's narrower.
Yeah.
So that's, that's just reflection that we have a hurdle about, about in this town about uh, building out our pedestrian infrastructure.
Well, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, our car infrastructure isn't great, right? That four-way stop, I always hear my neighbors complaining about traffic. But that's because I don't have a, a lifestyle that demands me to drive at high traffic times, but I had an appointment last week where I was driving that road at four thirty. And when I came in from Taff's Corners, back behind the church. The traffic had started for the four-way stop. And I was like, oh, this is what they're talking about. And this is the first time I've experienced it. In my X amount of years living here, but that is ridiculous. I mean, that's four-way stop and that, so it's like, we're not even doing it well for cars, which is all we're suited for. And you know, it's like, have we done a study on that? Could that be different?
And it was recommended through a.
Can we expect that the, the sidewalks can be plowed? We can't even figure out the thing we've already prioritized.
Yeah. Alas, there was a huge fight in Williston. Two thousand seven or eight, um, there was uh, there was. A proposal to build a roundabout at the, what's now the four-way stop. And it was going to be almost entirely federally funded because it was a um, high-frequency crash site. And so there was some federal money. It wasn't going to cost the town anything. And oh my goodness, that, those public meetings, I had only just moved here and I was, I was shocked. And they didn't build it. There was such vitriol against the roundabouts. One person got up and said that they were characteristic of Nazi Germany. And it was like, oh my gosh, it's a roundabout. Like, it's a more efficient design and. It cuts down on.
Everything.
Missions and is more safe for crosswalk, like Chapin and I both live right next to that corner. And my, my kids were little at that time. They were, you know, four and six or something and. And I, you know, I couldn't, they couldn't walk to the quick stop, which is like a two-minute walk from my house, but they couldn't go. By themselves because there was no way to cross there.
There's no crosswalk, no flashing light, there's.
That, right. Now there's a flashing light, but there, and there's only one crosswalk, but it doesn't cross route two, so.
Right.
Anyway, so it was a whole big fuss and um, yeah, for years, the word roundabout was like this toxic. I bet if you tried to propose it again. So maybe times have changed, right? Like maybe things have shifted, maybe people are willing to.
Maybe the traffic's gone so bad that, I mean, everybody could.
Yeah, it's crazy.
I never understood what my neighbors were talking about. And then I drove that at that specific time of day and I was like, wow, you're really onto something here.
I live right at that corner, so I have no choice. And sometimes I even feel like I just want to pull into Chapin's driveway and just.
I was gonna say, your choices.
Very famous uh, traffic, uh, there was very famous roundabout in Collingswood, New Jersey, around where I grew up. That they took out and replaced with a series of traffic lights and it became a disaster. Um, and they couldn't get it re uh, re-implemented until they cha-changed it to a traffic circle. So they ended up taking out a roundabout, putting in lights and taking out the lights, putting in a quote-unquote traffic circle, but that's the only way they could get it passed was giving it another name.
That's pretty funny. Well, maybe, maybe we need to revisit the question of a, although they actually are different. Traffic circles and roundabouts are not quite the same, but.
When Emily, when Emily led the village walk on, about the village zoning. Spontaneously, it came up that that was proposed to be imposed on us. And so somebody is still upset that it was ever proposed. Um, and so there's, it's a, it's a really tough one. Also, people have a misinterpretation that it's like the one at Maple Tree Place that's too small or the one in Winuski, this.
Which is enormous.
Which is two lanes wide, et cetera, et cetera. Yeah, and where, so they don't know about the examples, say, in Montpelier. Um.
Or Waterbury.
Or Waterbury that are successful.
Yep.
Yeah, that's a good one.
And the traffic right now on Williston Road, I think is exceptionally long because of the interstate project. Right now, so just after exit um, eleven. The interstate's one lane. If you haven't been through that way, it's miraculous what they're doing right now. They dug out the whole interstate. Um, and so even today, I was delayed in traffic for probably an extra three or four minutes. By um, all the way past like the school stop to get here. And I've never sat in traffic that long on a Tuesday before half. Um, so I think the line is exceptionally long right now because I think people are just trying to avoid the interstate.
Yeah, but that also shows us, like, it's, it's the extremes that reveal. How, how things could be better, right? So.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I'll say this, while this is the topic up, I then and still think we should have a roundabout or a traffic circle or whatever you want to call it. At the federated church and also at the Catholic church. In other words, at Old Stage Road. And those two things would demarcate the village and.
Yeah.
We, different kind of light posts and that would help calm traffic so much because people have to slow down to go through. Um, the traffic circle. Anyway, that's my, it's contrary to some of my fellow residents.
Yeah. Okay, um, other thoughts, other things you'd like to bring up and then we can bring this to a close for now. Emily, is there something else you'd like to hear us? Fight opinions on?
Um, not at this moment. I think like to Alex's point, we'll keep the survey open. If, if other ideas or questions pop up or. Um, other work plan ideas and hey, we talked about this a while ago. Where did that idea go? And you reach out to me or Matt or plug in the survey.
Sounds good. Any final comments anybody would like to bring in here?
Th- thank you for doing this. And, and uh, this is a tangential comment, but I was critical to select board earlier and, and repeatedly. They appointed all of us and we're a very constructive group. So we should give them credit for that.
Despite their other flaws, perhaps. Is that what you're saying, Chapin? That's great. Okay. Well, thank you all. I, I really appreciate you, um, you know, being willing to kind of. Interact in a way that's a little bit unusual for, for um, our usual meetings and uh. Added, added trickiness with the hybrid formats and Zoom platforms and. Um, this weird green lighting in my ro- my guest room. I have no idea what's going on, why I look green. Um, but maybe you don't see it, but I do and it's driving me crazy. But uh, anyway, so thank you all very much. I think we can. Entertain a motion to adjourn unless you have something final, Emily.
Yeah, uh, so you probably got an email from Aaron Dickinson, uh, the assistant to the town manager. Next Thursday, September fifteenth, we're having a volunteer appreciation day. Um, I'm gonna drop the RSVP link in the chat. Um, just let us know if you can come or not and um. We hope you can attend. We're gonna try to do this more often just to thank everybody for. Uh, your service um, as a town. There will be food.
Alright, great. Thank you. And thanks for reminding us of that. Well, I hope everybody can come and uh, maybe we could actually. Meet Ellie in person.
And the new energy committee too.
And the energy committee, ooh, there we go. Okay, sounds great. Alright, um. Alright, I think everybody is in agreement on that and uh, have a great evening, everyone. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night, thanks.
Good night.